This conference will now be recorded.
All right. All right. So, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January 27th workshop meeting of the Board of Commissioners. I would ask before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, if we could just first do a roll call, Renee, of who's present this evening?
Commissioner Walk.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
And then I think we will note the record that Commissioner Mobilia and Seton are not in attendance.
Correct. Correct. All right. That being said, I would ask that everybody please rise, and I will bring my flag out. My apologies. I don't have it sitting right here. Please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of United States.
United States of America. To the Republic.
Which stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everybody. I would like to note that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed and posted on Board Docs for public access. With that being said, we're going to move right into our topic for tonight. This is a workshop meeting for discussion there at this point on land development notification process. So, I'm going to hand things over to get things started to Dave Manhart to give us a little overview on the topic and so we can, oh, there's Commissioner Seton just arrived. If you could note that for the record, Renee, and we will get things rolling. Dave, welcome.
I think Commissioner Morgan, just quickly before we start, I just want to remind everybody, we are on a 45-minute timeframe tonight for the meeting because of the zoning hearing board meeting. So, again, we're going to, it's a limited time period, so we just need to be mindful of that.
Thanks, Renee. Thanks for that reminder. I failed to mention that. And just, it is a short timeframe tonight, but it'll be a great opportunity to kind of set the pace, and we'll have additional meetings after this, I'm sure, to discuss the same subject matter. So, without further ado, Dave?
Let me, oops. So, I have a quick presentation. I don't know, in the interest of time, I'm not going to really go through the whole reading everything. But we went through and kind of looked at MPC requirements for public notice, and then looked at township SALDO for notice. And so, there's kind of where we started, and this kind of lays the groundwork for where we are. So, when we started looking at the MPC, you know, we looked at the definition section, and a lot of the language from the MPC talks about, when it refers to public notice, it talks about publishing in the newspaper is kind of where a lot of that is directed. The public notice, I think we're really talking about is who gets notified or a mailing in South Whitehall. So, one of the things that, when we started going through, one of the things we kind of came up with or noticed, and Joe, perhaps you can chime in here, a lot of the notice requirements were related to somebody that requested notice and provided an envelope, and it talks about email addresses and things like that. And then the other piece of that is zoning ordinances. So, that was kind of general. And then with zoning ordinances, it basically applies to any parcel of land within the zone that's getting changed is requirement. And Joe, so that's, I'm going to let, do you have any comments or any additional?
I can certainly add a few comments if it's helpful to everyone who's listening. I know you haven't touched on the SALDO requirements yet, and I imagine you'll get to that, Dave. But I would note that the legal requirements for notice in connection with a development, in connection with zoning ordinance or map changes are spelled out in the Municipalities Planning Code. Those are required, and if they're not followed, it would be considered to be a procedural defect in the action being taken. Anything beyond what's in the MPC that's required by the township is appropriately in a SALDO or a zoning ordinance as applicable, and that would be above and beyond the legal requirement. In looking at what Dave has put up so far, certainly it's correct information. It's coming straight from the Municipalities Planning Code. The only thing that I'm thinking of right now that I haven't seen yet is that when there is a map change, other than a map change for the entire township, such as a comprehensive rezoning, then there's a requirement for certain notices to be given in connection with a map change. But that's all I have for right now.
Yeah. And so, I think it's, the requirements of notice are pretty lax, for lack of a better word. And then, so like Joe said, the townships or municipalities have the right to require extra notice. So, one of the things that South Whitehall SALDO sets up is additional notice requirements. So, we go above and beyond the MPC. So, this applies to basically any subdivision and land development. So, we mail out notices, postcards to properties within 300 feet for basically any subdivision or land development. We also do that for zoning hearing board. Move my screen. I apologize.
And I would just note, and this is anecdotally, not without having, I mean, I've not done any kind of survey or tried to inventory it, but since I've worked in so many municipalities over the years, I would say that generally speaking, my observation has been that providing notice to people who own property within X number of feet of the subject property is pretty common in zoning matters. So, variances, special exceptions, conditional uses, but less uniform, less common when it comes to land developments and subdivisions. Certainly, South Whitehall, as David pointed out here, does have it, and many municipalities do, but there's some municipalities that have no public notice requirement for mailing to residents in connection with development.
Yeah. And I think, oh, my cursors. Yeah. And so, I guess the other piece that's kind of missing, and it came up in the last planning commission, is we post properties with a piece of wood and a piece of paper that we talked about at the planning commission. So, the property is posted, so people driving by have an opportunity, well, they can see that it's posted. And then, you know, they may have to stop, and I know Brian's here, and he said he stopped and read the notice on one the other day. So, that's kind of where we are with how we do our notice. One thing that, as the community development staff, we're discussing is, we've applied it to other projects kind of outside of this. So, we've used discretion in some places to notify within that 300 feet or even beyond. So, you know, in the interest of time, I didn't want to go into a whole bunch of detail of the exact language of, you know, all the ordinances and the SALDO and the MPC. So, I thought we could leave it out for discussion, kind of talk about, you know, thoughts on our notice process and any improvements.
I just have one comment based on the last slide you had up, Dave. The posting of the property that you outlined there, there is a property posting requirement that's pretty common. In some municipalities, the municipality itself through staff will do the posting. In other municipalities, they let it up to the property owner to do the posting for a zoning hearing. And then, in either case, I think it's good practice to require that whoever's done the posting certify to it. And on rare occasion, I've been at zoning hearings, and a resident will come up and say, "Well, yeah, I saw it go up, but somebody took it down." The requirement under the law is that it be put up, not that it stay up until the zoning hearing. And so, sometimes you do have that glitch. So, on the municipal side, particularly when we're talking about a zoning map change, I recommend that photographs be taken to verify it, but at a minimum, there'd be a certification from whoever posted if no photographs.
Yeah. And that, we post, staff will post properties, and staff will send out the mailings. So, this is all things that township, that the township does, again, above and beyond the MPC.
Yeah. Just to be clear, the postings, I believe, are done for zoning hearing board and for rezonings. So, we post those properties. A property posting is not done for a land development. At least, it's not required by our SALDO, and it's not something we do. I do want to clarify something Dave said. He mentioned that we do go above and beyond. I don't like saying we use our discretion, because what we have done is, anytime anybody wants to be notified, we add them to the list. So, and I believe the MPC does speak somewhat to that of if they wish to be notified, we can certainly do that. So, we don't generally as staff use our discretion. We use the regulations in SALDO and zoning, but they can be expanded by simple, you know, request. And we have done that quite often. That's something we do as a matter of course.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Thanks, Greg. And Dave, that was a good overview. I think, I think the goal for our workshop, and certainly not something we're going to get all completed tonight, I'm sure, but was to talk about how to enhance, within reason and in a method and process that makes sense, the ability to communicate possibly further than the 300 feet that we're doing now. And how do we do that in such a way that's uniform and consistent across the board for any type of project that comes across the township's table? Now, maybe that means, I'm just throwing this out there to kind of start the conversation, maybe that means, you know, looking at, you know, project, you know, does it, if we look at a project overall acreage or size or whatever, I don't know. I'm just throwing things out there. I don't know how to do it. I'm not sure how other people do it, if they have enhanced notification processes. But I believe that's where we want to kind of start, springboard our conversation to see what can we do. And then, we also have to consider all the other parts of that as well. If we do enhance it, you know, there are administrative time that is involved with it. There's costs that are involved with it. How do we manage those things to make it a process that makes sense overall for the community and for the township as a whole? So, I think, you know, starting out with knowing what we have to do, what we currently do, and how can we make that better is a perfect springboard for the conversation. So, I kind of leave it at that and maybe open it up for some thoughts and comments from the board to get things started and just kind of brainstorm a little bit on where we want to go with this.
Well, thank you. You said a couple of things there that I was thinking as well. First of all, thank you to David and whoever else supported you to put this information together. I don't think we've ever seen it all in such a consolidated place. So, once again, thank you for that. I'm going to talk specifically about large developments. You know, so I know it's a subcategory of everything, but it's a big category because it has such a big impact on the township. So, this could apply to, you know, any of the large developments in progress, certainly Ridge Farms, any of the ones that are coming up like Parkview or Hillview. I'd like to refer back to what happened on Ridge Farms, and I think what I'm about to say is accurate. And I'd like to tell you for sure, I'm just talking in concept. I'm not trying to write the ordinance, you know, I'm not trying to, you know, get down into exactly how this would work or in detail. But in concept, what happened on Ridge Farm was originally, if we go back to the fall of 2017, notices were going out to like the 300 people or a pretty small number of people. And around that time, the public was coming to the meeting and complaining, honestly, that, you know, they weren't getting notices, and how could they possibly get notices? And that, it was a topic at one of the Board of Commissioner meetings as well. And the township went to something that was very sensible, and it's something that Greg said. If people wanted notice, you know, they could, on the signups, you know, they could become now on the list of people who would get notices about that particular development. And, you know, at that time, it was Ridge Farm. That worked well, I thought, extremely well for, let's say, three years, where there was an ever-growing number of people who were on the list who wanted to be notified. And the township did a great job. I think Greg personally did a great job in sending those postings out. Then, a few months ago, there was a little bit of a surprise where we had a Ridge Farm meeting, and the postcards didn't go out for some reason, and people were disappointed, you know, that we didn't follow through what we had been doing for the last two to three years. So, anyway, my thought and concept is very similar to what Commissioner Morgan said, that when we have a development that either it's past some threshold of number of dwellings or amount of acreage, we should get off the fact where, you know, we're going to have a broader notification. We're going to have to put some terms and definitions in that. But then, in this case, people who want to be notified from that point forward while that development's in progress, you know, we honor their request to do that. So, that's my concept for large land development. Thank you.
I'd like to maybe, and the 300 feet, in my view, is a good start, not necessarily start. But 300 feet in a rural area is totally different than 300 feet in an area where you have townhouses and things like that. So, my thought is, does it make sense, maybe, Greg, you can let us know, if it makes sense to, instead of 300 feet maybe in rural areas in order to be able to notify more people, make it 500, 600 feet, and that could be maybe based on zoning. If, you know, if it's high density, then we keep it at 300. If it's not, so, different zoning, the next level, maybe make it 400, and then the next level, make it maybe 600, 700. Does that make sense?
Well, if you're asking my opinion.
Yeah, of course. Yes.
Well, you're right. In rural areas, the properties tend to be larger. Of course, that also follows. So, if a larger property has an issue on it, you have a larger boundary from which this will spread out. Obviously, 300 feet from any boundary is still 300 feet, but it definitely, you know, if it's more boundary, you're contacting a similar number of properties, given the density. It would be more complicated to do it by zoning district, of course, but it's something that we can certainly do.
But.
Yeah. My only concern would be, should a property cross zoning districts, then we would have to, you know, have something in place that dealt with that as well.
So, one of the things that I had been thinking about when we started talking about this is, the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission uses something called projects of regional significance, and they have thresholds based on land use types. And what if we had a similar concept of, you know, land uses of municipal significance, and kind of use their land use types? And granted, the thresholds that they use for regional, you know, would swamp us. We'd have to tweak those thresholds and kind of turn them down a little bit. But that gives a kind of already practice, a way to categorize developments. They don't use it for notice requirements, but they use it for different meeting types and different reviews and things like that. So, the concept, using that concept would give us a way to gauge the intensity of development, and then we could tie, you know, enhanced notice requirements for any municipally significant project. Was one of the thoughts that, one of the directions I think we could go with it. But again, it's a lot of fine tuning, and we run the risk, you know, if we, if we set the threshold at a certain level, you know, we run the risk of somebody coming in right below it to, so they don't have to do that notice requirements. But the township's doing the notice requirement anyway. So, I don't know if that would deter a developer, you know, encourage a developer to bring it in right below that threshold. But I think that might give us some guidance on, at least a model on how to proceed with categorizing development.
So, David, it sounded to me like what you just said in a little bit more official municipal language is consistent with, like the concept I said, for large development notification based on acreage or dwellings. You use the term municipal significant development, right?
Yes. Yeah. And I think they use land uses of regional significance is what they use. So, we could potentially use land uses of municipal significance and kind of use their model.
Dave, I think, I think, I think it's a great idea to not reinvent the wheel. Certainly, I know exactly what you're talking about with LVPC, and that might be a great template to go off of. At the end of the day, what we need to make sure of is that we're consistent. So, if we do put something like this in place, you know, if somebody falls underneath or whatever, we can't, like, we can't massage things just the way we want them to be, just because we want to massage things the way they want them to be. It has to be, there's a process, and you follow the process. So, you know, I think it gives us some latitude. You know, once you, once you get that template, and we can look at how that might apply to South Whitehall and, you know, the regions that we have and the zoning we have and the, you know, the potential acreages that we might be looking at, you might be able to turn it into something specific, obviously, to South Whitehall. But it would have to remain consistent. We would have to stay within those boundaries for it to truly be a document that is fair and to everybody, honestly. But I like that. I like that idea of looking at that document to see how we can fit it to South Whitehall or a version of it.
I think if we, the, one of the nice things about it is, we can, it's not tied to zoning district. It's just tied to land use type. So, it's just, I think it would just be one section in the SALDO that kind of talks about it. So, we wouldn't have to go into each zone, update it there. But again, we would have to look at it and see how it best fits into our existing ordinances. That'd be great. That'd be great, David.
I think the concepts being discussed are legally workable. The only thing to maybe say what Commissioner Morgan said, but in a different way, what I would caution against is that based upon the land use type or the size of the development, we don't want to make it a matter of discretion, whether it be with staff or commissioners or the public. There needs to be a standard of process established, and then it gets followed, but it can't be a discretionary matter.
Yeah. And that, again, land use, we'd have to be very careful with that. You almost have to keep them pretty general. And also, land uses are popping up. So, we have to be aware of that as well. So, yeah, they're all things to consider when we define land uses. But I'm a big, big proponent of not reinventing the wheel, using guidance that's already out there. So, LVPC has something. Also, ITE has described land usage. Theirs is very, I mean, it's in a book this big, but I think they have some general categories you might be able to apply. So, those are some thoughts that we had, and, you know, Greg and I have discussed some of it. And I think it's something that we could, you know, research and vet a little bit, see how we incorporate something like that into the ordinances.
Could I ask a question here?
Sure.
Because it appears that we're talking strictly about land development. Is that what we're talking about here? Or are we talking about a consistent township-wide notification system for everything that the MPC requires us to notify people for?
That's a good question, Greg, because I think the focus is on land development, but would it apply to everything?
I think it should be the latter, because like the zone change came before us on Hillview. You know, if we don't apply it to zone change or text amendments, you know, we run the risk of missing that.
Yeah. I would say there's already been established some confusion, because as Mr. Walk has said, we followed Ridge Farm along through the conditional use approach, and some of the land development approach. But when they went to the Board of Commissioners, our regulations are, stand moot on that. That there, there are no regulations to notice when they go to the Board of Commissioners, and that confused people. So, I think it's good to be consistent across the board so that these carry. So, people understand what's happening, and they can, you know, plan their lives around.
Good point, Greg.
Why don't I suggest that we, you know, I just am trying to be cognizant of the time, because I know we're going to bounce at 6:45. But, and Diane, I'll give you a chance here, because I know you had, you had something you wanted to say as well. But if everybody agrees, maybe it makes sense to take this template, this, from the LVPC or a version of that, and see how we, how it works for something maybe we could do here in South Whitehall. And that could be the starting point for our next workshop and discussion, giving your staff a chance to kind of really kind of dig into that a little bit deeper and see how that might apply to us. Diane, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, David, yes, thank you for bringing up the LVPC. I think that's absolutely a great starting place. Something I know that I've talked about in a prior meeting, I think it was the Ridge Farm one even. I know we're not required on the postcards to go beyond the 300 feet. And Mr., I remember. And Mr. Taylor, I remember you opined in that meeting regarding obligations. So I'm wondering, as we work through this as well, to potentially also have a place on our website where we have a listing of developments that have come before the township, even at a sketch plan level. And note on there somewhere that this is a courtesy posting, not a, you know, requirement to keep our residents up to date with what is happening in the township. And certainly we have a newsletter that goes out multiple times a year. Another avenue where we can say, hey, this is what is starting to go through the process in the township. I guess similar to even what our engineer reports to us monthly, you know, we have a, a list that he gives us what's happening. Because, you know, I think human nature, people don't really pay attention to impacts them. But we can take into account also people considering moving into the township, you know, might want to see what's going on growth wise and what may be in the beginning stages in development, maybe in close proximity where they're potentially looking to, to invest. You know, those sort of things, I think more information that we can put forth, not necessarily just postcards. We know how the mail system is. Postcards get lost. They get, you know, put in with your mail and you maybe don't see them if they do make it to your home. But certainly utilizing our township website and our newsletter to just kind of keep it updated as things are posted. Thought that I have.
We, as a staff, we're looking into something. When we're researching websites, we came across excellent people. So kind of after the website gets launched, that's kind of the next focus, to kind of look at how we can put some of that development out there. Using GIS so that there's a map and people can see things are. So we're looking at that.
And I, I hate to cut everybody short here, but we had two questions in the chat for courtesy of the floor and, and we are going to get bounced from this meeting at 6:45. So if, if the board is okay, I'm going to, I'm going to shoot over to the chat for courtesy of the floor. It's going to give us a very short amount of time before we have to adjourn this meeting, but your, your questions will be heard and we can certainly talk further at another public meeting if we, Cindy Smith.
Hello. Thank you. Hi. A few items I'd like to bring up as far as the 300 feet. We have five acres and it's just our house and our neighbor, a driveway separates us. We get the notice and he doesn't. So that's, that 300, I think, definitely has to be, like you all were saying, looked at carefully. But not only, you have to look like how it's going to, in my opinion, how it's going to affect other people. If I don't pay my South Whitehall taxes, they know where to find me. So do you think it would be something that the township should be relating to the taxpayers? Where's your money going? Oh, but you know, we're building this development, whatever.
I guess I missed your question because the township isn't building the development, the developer's building the development. I'm confused.
But you're, okay, well, the problem is people are not getting notified because of the 300 feet. But with people moving in and out and the signup sheet at the meetings that, who knows when that will resume. There's a lot of people that are uneducated about the process in different areas, not just Ridge Farms. But I'd like to know what else is going on in South Whitehall Township. I don't know how you accomplish that, but the postcards at 300 feet, in my opinion, have to definitely be revised.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
And, and I think, yeah, you're welcome. Yep, definitely. Well taken. Monica Hodges.
Hi, thank you so much. I'll make this really quick. I was reading a little bit about this and concerned about maybe the more rural areas where you have less property owners and more properties. And a township that I had read about actually extended the distance 50 feet increments to make sure that they encompass at least 10 properties. So maybe that would help in our less congested areas. That's all I wanted to suggest. Thanks.
Monica, yeah, we, we will take that under advisement for certain. Lee Salt.
Hi, thank you. I'll be quick. I have a lot of things, but I'll be quick. I think what Dave was saying about the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, is, is that kind of more like a tiered type notification system? Is that kind of what you're going towards, Dave?
Yeah, I don't know that it would be multiple tiers, but we'd at least have one. And this is just concept right now. We'd have at least one. Like if it's over this threshold, it's a thousand foot buffer or something. And that keeps it simple. If we add tiers.
My thinking, my thinking will be, I'm trying to be quick. Like if, if it's a garage rezoning or something like just for somebody's garage, that would be, you know, the 350 would be close enough. That'd be no big deal. If it's like tacos, a townhouse or houses is going to do over by the copper, the, the paddock, used to be the paddock, I can't think what it is now. But those, those homes back there, that might have to be a bigger area or notification for people that are in that area. But for example, I live, you know, smack dab, you know, a block away from Joe Sutton. And, you know, we didn't get notified with either Ridge Farms. I'm 3,000 people from Cedar Crest Boulevard and, and Walbert Avenue. And I'm a mile by a close flight to Parkview. Now, those developments impacted me because not right beside me, but traffic wise and other things, they impact us. But we wouldn't get notified for those. So maybe for larger planning developments, they would have to be, you know, those people should be notified. So maybe a tiered approach is something to think about. The other thing was, I don't know if this is something that maybe we could do. I, I know newspapers required, but not many people get the newspaper anymore. They might get the Parkland Press, but they don't get the morning call. If with the website, is there a possibility of push notifications that residents sign up? And somehow there's a push notification out, say, you get a text message, hey, there's a, you know, in a week, there's a planning commission meeting or there's a zoning commission meeting on this property that's, that's, you know, in South Whitehall Township. And, and that would kind of, you know, help that it's, it's a push notification for people instead of, and they could sign up for it. So therefore they wouldn't, it wouldn't be something that the township have to continually regenerate in the list for. They would sign up for it and it would get pushed out to them automatically. The other thing was real quick is, is it possible to even turn around the cost, if there is a cost, to the developer? So the township doesn't have to pay for it. So those are my quick things off the top of my head. Thank you very much for the time.
Thanks, Lee. Thanks, Lee. All right. And I think this might have to be our last question. I apologize. But Rob Hodges.
Hello. Lee kind of stole my thunder there. Thanks, Lee. This is the push notification. Mine was email that if there's a system where emails, people can submit their emails or text numbers, as Lee said, and, and receive notifications about all, any of these important meetings. Because I understand that 300 feet is the legal requirement, but you know, these large developments with traffic, use of our tax money, crowding of schools, it affects everybody in the township. So it's not just 300 feet. So anybody who's interested could submit an email and then email list could be collected. Or as Lee said, text, you know, push notification to be sent out so that anybody who's interested about any of these meetings could receive one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you, Rob. And Joanne, we can certainly get you some answers to your questions to the best of our ability. I, I hate to do this, but we're going to automatically get bounced here, I think, around 6:45. Is it Renee? Which it is 6:45.
Starts the next meeting, we're going to get bounced. Yeah.
Okay, so I, I just don't want to have this, this meeting standing open and get bounced before we, we adjourn it. So would you be able, Dave or Greg, to be able to help out with, with Joanne Markowitz's question? If we can't get it to at the evening, thank you. Thank you. All right, everybody. With that being said, I am going to note that we have no executive session planned for tonight. And we would need a motion for adjournment and we should be planning another workshop here in the very near future. Renee, I'll leave that up to you and Dave to come up with some good beats and push them out to the board so that we can agree on it and announce it possibly at our next meeting when we'll have another workshop to follow up on. It's giving staff a chance to kind of go through that template from the LVPC. Great presentation tonight, gentlemen.
Yes, thank you. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Walk. All in favor?
Thank you, David. Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it.
Thank you guys very much. Have a lovely evening.